I'd like to call the Tuesday, June 6, 2023 Papillion City Council meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines. Glover. Fanslaw. Kluk. Stube. Engberg.
We have a quorum? All right. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Ms. Powers, Administrator's report, please.
Thank you. Today is the 79th anniversary of D-Day. And if you haven't had a chance to visit the half-sized replica of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier in the community gym at the Papillion Landing yet, it will be on display until noon on June 14th. Thank you to the American Legion Post 32 for sponsoring this educational display that is a breathtaking reminder of those who made the ultimate sacrifice. And the summer student landing memberships for college students are available now until June 16th. Also, the landing is holding its annual community appreciation weekend next weekend in conjunction with Papillion Days. And during the weekend, punch cards are half-priced. An annual memberships include an extra month for free, and there are open house and appreciation events all weekend. So if you get a chance to check that out, there's some great deals there. And the Papillion Days is finally here. The kickoff events start next Wednesday, the 14th, at City Park at 5:30 PM. There's an ice cream social, a live band kiddie parade, and the duck paddle drawing. And then there's fireworks, of course, on Friday. The parade is still on Saturday, but it moved up to 10:00 AM. So it's a little earlier this year. So I hope to see everyone there. The library's summer reading program kickoff event was held this last Saturday. Thank you to the library staff, the recreation staff, and the park staff that all made it a great community event. My kids loved it. It was well-attended. And along those lines, the recreation department's summer day camps have started, and those are for preschoolers to age seven. And they're being held at the landing in Tara Hills Park. So the first few weeks are already full, but there's some availability in July and August, so if you want to check that out. And then, just a final reminder, there'll be a special meeting this Thursday, June 8th, at 6 o'clock PM for the consideration of approval of the ordinance to approve annexation number three and other items related to the annexation.
Thank you very much. Sir, motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Gaines. Second by Councilman Fanslaw. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Five yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item D1, Ordinance 2000. An ordinance to amend Chapter 9 of the Papillion Municipal Code to repeal Chapter 10 Papillion Arts Council. Is there a councilman to let us introduce?
(Inaudible).
Introduce by Councilman Engberg. E1, Ordinance 1996, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 170 Subdivision of Land, Article 5 subdivision design standards to provide for access management and subdivision through route regulations and to provide for an effective date. Applicant city of Papillion. It's the access management amendment. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Item E2, Ordinance 1998, An Ordinance to Annex Certain Real Estate to the City of Papillion and to Provide for an Effective Date. It's the 2023 Annexation Number Three. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Item E3, Ordinance 1999, An Ordinance to Change the Official Zoning Map of the City of Papillion in accordance with Section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code to Adopt a Zoning Map and to Apply Existing or Future Zoning Regulations, Property Use Regulations, Building Ordinances, Electrical Ordinances, Plumbing Ordinances, and All Other Regulatory Ordinances of the City of Papillion pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute 16901 and to Provide for an Effective Date. It's also related Annexation Number Three. It's a public hearing. Any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Item F1, Resolution R230091, A Resolution to Prove an Agreement with Waste Connections of Nebraska, Inc., for Trash and Recycling Services at City-Owned Facilities. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230091? Motion by Councilman Engberg. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Mumgarth. Any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Five yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F2, Resolution R230096, It's a public hearing and a vote. A Resolution to Approve a Class I Liquor License for First Watch Restaurants, Inc., Doing Business as First Watch Number 6004, 304 Olson Drive, Suite 117, and the Manager Application for Dylan Fegan. It's a public hearing. Proponents? Is the applicant here? Welcome.
Thank you for having me.
We don't have a real long agenda. You guys making changes or just changing manager?
We're back with corporate instead of cut short management.
Cool. Appreciate having you in the community.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. Any opponents to the application? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230096? Motion by Councilman Gaines. Second by Councilman Fanslaw. Any discussion? Please vote.
Five yeas, zero nays.
Approved. Thank you. Item F3, Resolution R230097, A Public Hearing and a Vote. A Resolution to Approve a Class I Liquor License for B&amp;A Mex Omaha LLC, Doing Businesses on the Border Mexican Grill in Cantina, 8810 South 71st Plaza, and a Manager Application for Brian Larson. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Proponents, welcome.
Good evening, I guess it is. Fred, Frederick Stellic with Rose Welch Marks. We're the attorneys that represent the applicant. The owners are here. They stand behind me, Bryant and Amy Morrison. They are 30 years in the food business. They have most or not all the Sonic drive-ins, both in South Dakota and Nebraska. They have another on-the-border location up in South Dakota that's been open for seven years. It's had a liquor license that entire time. They've never had any trouble, never been pulled or anything like that. They're well-aware of the issues with liquor licenses. They will train their staff very well. They'll continue to train them. They understand that. They have to have a liquor license basically to be competitive in that business. And they're here if you have any questions we'd like to ask them.
I think the biggest question we should get is, when are you going to open? People that are familiar with on-the-border are so excited. So...
We were ready last month.
I would say we do appreciate you coming in. I mean, having, there was a nice location that's prominent, and then to have that go out, and you're just wondering, is it going to be a vacant? And almost immediately, you announced that you were coming in, and there was a lot of buzz in the community. People are really looking forward to it, so thank you.
We're excited.
Mr. Mumgarth.
Yeah, I want to build on that. On the other side of the coin, why are you picking Papillion? I mean, you're coming in from out of town. You don't seem to have any connection here. Why Papillion?
They do have a connection. Like I said, they've got all the Sonic drive-ins here.
But why do you? I'm glad to see you here. I want to know, why are you here so we can duplicate that kind of stuff?
Well, four years ago, we were allowed to purchase the Sonics. We came and bought those. And we looked at Papillion and putting a Sonic there four years ago, and it wasn't the right time. And we even looked at doing on-the-border then as well, but it just wasn't the right time. And then COVID happened. Need I say more on that? And so it just kind of presented the right time. We both felt like we needed to do something. And then after we were like doing it, we were like, are we fools for doing this right now? You know what I mean? The timing. We like Papillion. We like the community. We're both probably more small-town people than we are big-town people. We live in Rapid City full-time. And so we love, we love it. We like the small-town side of it. So we're excited about it. We really are. So, yeah.
Well, yeah, I'm excited about it too, because, you know, as you mentioned, COVID was tough on businesses.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, we had a, we have a large shopping center that has suffered through that, just like many, many, particularly retail businesses. And to see somebody like you coming in from out of town and picking us now, that gives us some encouragement, at least me. And I'm very pleased to see that. And if there's things that the city council could do to attract businesses like you down to Papillion, please let us know. Because this is one council member who are very pleased to see it, and I think let's do it again over and over again.
Awesome. We appreciate that. Absolutely.
Would just say, welcome home.
Thank you.
Any other, are there any opponents?
I can say.
Yes, Mr. Fanslaw.
You didn't answer me your question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Opening. Any idea?
So we're scheduled to open July 5th.
Oh, okay.
That's not going to happen. It'll be put off a week, at least, yes.
So the folks from on-the-border corporate are here tomorrow, and we talked earlier, and we think that it's going to be, we're going to be delayed a week.
Okay.
So we originally were mid-June, and then we said, no, we're going to give our folks off on the 4th and then open up on the 5th.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you for your investment.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230097? Motion by Councilman Sunday? Second by Councilman Fanslaw. Any discussion? Please vote.
Five yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. And again, congratulations and thank you again. Item F4, Resolution R230102, A Resolution to Approve a Memo of Understanding Between the City of Papillion and the Papillion Arts Foundation. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230102? Motion by Councilman Engberg. Second by Councilman Mumgarth. Any proponents or opponents? Welcome. Hopefully you're proponent side.
Proponent. Chuck Wilcox, 901 Rahai Road. If you look back 30 years, you will witness the growth of public art in Papillion. Ken Molser established the band about 33 years ago, I think it was, 34, something like that. They funded and built and gifted to the city the Sumter Amphitheater. After that came the theater group, Papillion La Vista Community Theater. The group that started the Sumter Amphitheater became the Mayor's Arts Council, and which brings in visual arts. And last but not least, there we have the Pac Singers. Okay? By public art, I mean art that's available to the citizens of Papillion at no cost or little cost. So if you drive by and see a mural, and you can enjoy that, that's public art. If you go to the Pac Band concert and it's free, that's public art. And that's what has been built. Okay? More to the point, it's not just viewing, but it's participating. The people in Papillion participate in these things. You join the band, no charge. Join the chorus, no charge. Try out for a part in the play, no charge. Okay? So this is, this is public art, and we have developed over the last 30 years, I think, a fairly robust public art sector. My point is that if you look out 10 years, my prediction is there will be no more theater. It'll be gone in two years. The band will be gone. The chorus will be, maybe, maybe not. And the visual arts, which is connected with the Mayor's Arts Council, has a lot of good ideas that we can't make happen because of our connection with the city. It all boils down to funding. Where can we get funding? This initiative with the Papillion Arts Foundation and teaming with the city will make that possible. Okay? I'll go so far as to say, if this doesn't work, that in 10 years, we won't have any more public art. Thank you.
I want to build on that a little bit of how we got here. This is actually the second memo of understanding we approved. If you remember, about a year ago, we did a short term, and then the goal was to work towards a long-term, and this is the long-term result of that. We, the community survey that we do about every three years, we've now done the third one, and so we can see trends over time. And almost everything that we survey is highly positive, and the trends hold positive, except when it came to the arts. That one trend was, been trending down over the last three. What was, what was clear in the survey was the importance of it. People wanted it, but the, not the appreciation, the knowing about it and the opportunities were trending down. And that's actually kind of what began sparking this conversation, is what is the role of it? And as you think about the role of the arts and the conversations we had, there's a quality of life aspect, there's a promotion economic development aspect, there's a tourism aspect. And so working through all of that, and then also thinking, what's the city's role in arts? We have an arts council. Is it appropriate for us to do that? Is it appropriate to transfer that to a foundation and have them run it and design it? So that was in the conversation. What is the role of community betterment dollars? Not the tax dollars, but the community betterment dollars that we get, that can only be used for betterment programs and quality of life. And then I think the big game changer on, push this forward a little bit, was the state legislature last year created some new legislation for something called a creative district. And if you're familiar with the CCCF grant funds that we've, that we get, and we've gotten over a million dollars of these grants, they changed the state legislation that the only cities who can get those grants now are communities that have a creative district. And that's managed through the Nebraska Arts Council. And in order for a city to have a creative district, they have to partner with a not-for-profit to create that district. So then, started thinking, how do we retain the ability to get those grants? And it's around creative, it's around arts, and that's what the legislature was pushing. So a lot of that just came together on, on the collaboration. And then the other thing is the sustainability. A lot of the individuals running small groups, not sustainable for the next generation, but if you put an infrastructure and a whole community foundation around that, we believe you begin to create the sustainable structure for broader aspect of arts in the community. So the end result is the memo of understanding. I think the only point of clarification, not in the MOU itself, but in the staff report. The staff report talks about the community betterment, the $15,000 annual contribution, and it mentions that that would start in October of '24. Actually, the way the MOU is written, that starts in, upon approval of the MOU is the first payment of that. So it's more just clarification on the staff report, but the fiscal impact is correct. With that, any council discussion or questions? Mr. Engberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a moment to thank you and those folks like you, and mainly to congratulate and thank the mayor for all his work on this, because about a year ago now, I met with a small piece of the arts community and walked away from it and finally really realizing how fragmented it was. Every group was kind of doing their specialty, what they enjoyed to do. And when I talked to the mayor about that, he was already a step ahead. That's why he's the mayor. And already researched the change of state law and everything. I think this is going to be a great thing for the arts in Papillion, because now you're going to have one group focused on the arts, pulling the same rope, and more realistically, have a means to get funding for it that you wouldn't have otherwise, and you didn't have before. And I know it was a hard job and a lot of work on your behalf, Mayor, to get everybody to the table, to explain it, to get everybody to buy into it. And I'm glad to see it's going to happen. I really support it. And thanks, Mayor, for all your hard work to make it happen. It's going to be beneficial for many years to come.
Appreciate that. And when we talk about grants from the state, those aren't insignificant. Nebraska City, I think, just got a quarter-million-dollar grant from the state for the arts because they had an organized foundation. So this is some of the opportunities that I think we're hoping that this enables. Other council discussion? Mr. Sunday.
Thank you. I'm going to take another viewpoint here. I have great respect for this new foundation. It is a foundation, which means it's a charitable organization. And in my view, public funds should not be used to fund charities. That should be private funds. And it's nothing against the Papillion Arts Foundation at all. I'm sure it can thrive without public monies, and people are hurting out there right now. I don't know if anybody just got their property tax statements this week, but I haven't talked to anybody that's not at least 12% increase from last year. Many between 15 and 20% in one year. Mine personally was almost 16 and a half percent over from what it was last year. The taxpayers are hurting because of inflation. They're hurting, they're getting taxed to death, and there's no relief anywhere. And I know this isn't a great amount of money, but it's the principle. We shouldn't force somebody to give their tax money to a charity. That should be a voluntary act. And for that reason and that reason alone, I am going to be voting against this tonight.
That is understandable. I do want to make one clarification. The obligated funding in the MOU is not property tax dollars. The main one is from Keno, and by state law, that is restricted to community betterment activities, and believe the arts is community betterment. And then the small portion, if it plays a role in tourism, getting people here, then a small portion of that was the hotel tax coming from the people coming in. The only one that would be, that it opens the door for, for property tax, there was the third item in there of the discretionary annual amount for economic development and promotion, but there's no obligation to give that. That'd be the only one that would be property tax. The actual obligated dollars are the Keno and the hotel tax.
The hotel tax is 3% that I saw.
Yeah.
And I don't know what that comes to, but...
Be about $3,000.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Mumgarth.
Well, I do not agree with the concept that this arts foundation is a charity. If you want to call this a charity, then you go ahead and call Community Foundation, the Papillion Community Foundation, a charity. And you go ahead and call Winter Wonderland a charity, Papillion Days a charity. No, those are not charities. Those are essential parts of the quality of life in Papillion. You know, I've spent, I've been, I didn't grow up in Papillion. I came in, came here about 30 years ago, and I have been impressed by, over the years, the changes that happened to build the image of Papillion as a unique community that provides things like Winter Wonderland and Papillion Days. The, you know, and then the amphitheater. We built that amphitheater for this kind of stuff. It's a city facility dedicated for this kind of activity. The community theater, that draws people from eastern Nebraska and western Iowa every year. They get my money, believe me, they do. But they can't exist if they don't have the amphitheater, if they don't have places, you know, the ability to prepare and present and market that thing. And like Mr. Engberg mentioned, we had, about a year ago, we had a meeting with the community theater people, and they pointed out that, yes, if they could not get some sort of continued funding, they were going to have to go away. And I thought, no, that's like telling me that Papillion Days is going to go away. I put the community theater and the activities at the amphitheater on the very same level as Papillion Days and Winter Wonderland. You know, and you mentioned Ken Molser. Mr. Wilcox, you've been a great part of that kind of activity. That builds an image of Papillion as a place where you can live and have a great quality of life. That is a city purpose. The city purpose and the city funding exists in part to create a city that wants, that businesses like, like on the border want to come here, because they want to be part of what we have. So no, I can't sit here and say that what you're talking about is, is funding a charity. I say it is funding an essential city function that builds an image of Papillion that has been successfully built over, over the last 30, 40 years as a place where you can come, and it will be different. And you will walk away saying, wow, that's a unique town. And so, boy, I'm going to support it. I'll support it all the way. Because no, that idea that it's improper use of city funding to create things that make want, people to want to live in Papillion, I reject that. That makes no sense. So thank you very much for all the support you've given.
Mr. Ringberg.
In addition to agreeing with you, Councilman Mumgarth, 110%, I'll say one thing once again. We're not using property...
And that's a momentous thing.
Huh?
And that's, that's a momentous...
Well, it's on video. It's on video. You know, every once in a while, you know, unusual things happen. But I'll say it again, what you said. This isn't funded by property taxes. It has no effect on the middle levy, has no effect on our budget, nothing like that, because it comes out of our fund that is fed by Keno. And that's strictly for community betterment. Well, I can't find any better recipient, just like the Papillion Community Foundation, to make this a quality of life that makes it feel like home. And as long as it's not funded by property taxes that affect the residents of the community, I think it's money well-spent.
Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
Five yeas, one nay by Sunday.
Motion passes. Thank you. That's all the regular agenda items. No committees have met. Any comments from the floor?
I have a point of...
Oh, yes, sir.
I would get five, eight, seven, there's...
I voted.
Oh, you voted?
Yeah. And the good thing is for the public, in fact, we have some students. You notice the mayor runs the meeting, but the mayor doesn't vote. It's the break between the executive and legislative branch. But I do have, the mayor given mixed with two rights. One is to do a veto, and the council has a right to override that veto. And then the other one is, in the case of a tie vote, the mayor can vote on the tie vote as well, but in those two times. So good education.
Was there a tie vote?
It's, well, I'm going to ask Mr. Thiel for clarification. My understanding is always that if there is, it's of the full council, so if you end up in a four-one, well, I'll ask for an interpretation, because you can look at it two ways. It could be a four-one means it passes if it's a majority of those present. The other is, if it's a majority of the full council, then a four would have been the tie. I could tip it. It's actually confusing at the state level on that item.
Yeah, we always need five votes to approve anything. That's the first proposition. There's a brand-new state law that was signed by the government, governor today. It says the mayor can vote in two different situations. One is to break a tie in order to get to five. Then the other one is, if because of absences, the council isn't able to get to a majority, then the mayor can add that fifth vote in favor. That latter one is the one that we have today.
Thank you.
When does that law become effective?
Today. It's got an emergency clause on it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Effective today.
Mr. Gaines.
So my interpretation, my recollection of the way that the law was, was that it had to end up in a situation, it had to be a tie before the mayor could exercise his right to vote to reach a majority of the council to pass something.
Actually, the way it was before, there was about three different interpretations from city attorneys across the state, which is why then they wanted to make the change in the legislature.
Right. Well, and I just make that point, because the legislative history from the committee actually clarified the intent, and it was, it was something to do with the city of Bellevue. But I still think procedurally, it has to be a tie before you vote. I didn't look at the new legislation. So I don't know about what just went through today, but...
So it's the case of where you need, you need five votes, so if you end up with four affirmative, then the mayor can add the fifth vote.
I'm just asking procedurally, so in case it's challenged at some point, until the vote is taken, you don't know if we need that vote or not.
Correct.
So voting with the councils would be a premature vote. That's my interpretation of the law, but I, I'll leave it up to Alan.
Yeah, we could do it either way. I mean, we could take a vote, a vote of the council, and then the mayor can shine in.
I would just suggest that it might be safer to let one of the people that are absent tonight, that are in favor of it, to recall it and have another vote.
And that's a good point.
Would be a safer process than, than what you're suggesting, in my view.
Yep. Appreciate that. Any other discussion? Any comments from the floor? Any other council comments? If not, just a few things from the last couple of weeks. The chamber had its State of the County. Thanks for everybody coming there. the County. Thanks for everybody coming there. There's had good updates there. Had a couple of good events. One, the Mayor's Youth Council participated, and thank you very much, had the Nation of Patriots kickoff. That was the one where a single US flag was flown over the US Capitol. It was brought down. It was brought to Sumter, and then it's going on an escorted motorcycle tour of all 50 states. And then, I forget how many days, 115 days, I think? It comes back to Papillion after all 50 states, and there will be a homecoming, I think, on September 16th at Sumter. So, thank you for that. I see Ms. Renante is in the audience. She was, she rode on with that as well. So, thank you for that. That was a really neat experience. We had the half marathon. Thank you for the staff for that. United Cities Met. Again, not a lot happened, other than getting a recap at the legislature. Had a final meeting with the Arts Foundation. The Wastewater Agency Met, made a slight, potential slight change to the growth management plan, mainly to recognize if somebody owns a tract of land and they've got a house on it, something happens to that house, they want to rebuild that house, they have a right to rebuild it. They don't have to go through all the plating and all the sewer bureaucracy. They can rebuild their house. The, we had an Eagle Scout project, did an enhancement at Overland Hills Park, built a Gaga ball pit. Getting to be a pretty popular game. I think of it as dodgeball in an enclosed, small enclosed area. It's pretty fun to watch. Got a rib, we had the ribbon cutting at Fovero's, which is up in Terra Plaza. And then we had the Memorial Day ceremonies at Cedar Dale Cemetery and the National Cemetery. So, pretty, pretty busy period. Also, you can tell summer's opening up. Ms. Powers mentioned a bunch of this, but splash pads are open, Papio Bay is open. The library summer reading program is now open and through the end of July. The farmers markets are now open. Papio Day is on the 14th, again kicking off on Wednesday night. And then the time of the parade change and the car show is coming back. And then Fire Camp is again this year. They've got, if you've got kids that want to sign up for that, that deadline's coming up on the 19th. We got a ribbon cutting at La Paz, which is the Mexican restaurant in the American Legion, and that's on June 27th. And then it was mentioned, the Tomb of the Unknown replica is sponsored by American Legion Post 32, and that's at Papillion Landing now, and that's free to the public, and that'll be there until June 14th. Mr. Ingberg, you had one more item.
No, I was just going to remind you that on the cover of the Nebraska Municipal Review that we get monthly, this month has a, the cover art is Papillion's Butterfly Park. So, if you haven't been by there, please go check it out.
Appreciate that. Any other council comments? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Gaines? Second by Councilman Sunday. Please vote.
Five yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. We are adjourned.